It would call the Apache Junction City Council meeting to order. invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Waldron.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this evening to perform city business. We ask for your guided assistance as we and our staff make decisions that continue to make this community an enjoyable place to live and work. We also ask for your hand to support for the families of Amy Hatcher. She was taken from us early and left her young daughter. We ought be with their family as they celebrate her life. We also want to express our support for the Dave Boron's family as he was taken so quickly from us by ALS. Please give both families their support and their strength. Finally, we ask again for your protective hand for our first responders. Keep them all safe as they continue to protect us and our belongings. We also extend this to our military members and their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
President of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Waldron.
Here.
All members present, do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that we acknowledge receipt of the Library Board Trustees' Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2017-2018 and that the Economic Development Agreement with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, GPEC, for Economic Development Services for the term of one year in the amount of $23,984 be approved and that Councilmember Jeff Struble be appointed as the City of Apache Junction representative to the GPEC Board of Directors and that approval be given to the award of contract to Sunland Asphalt for the crack and fog seal of Apache Trail from Meridian Drive to Idaho Road in partial fulfillment of the fiscal year 2018-2019 street maintenance plan through the Government Procurement Alliance Cooperative Contract Number 17-16P-05 in the amount of $176,354.49 plus a 10% contingency for unseen change orders in the amount of $17,635.44 for a total not to exceed $193,989.93 and that approval be given to the award of contract to Sunland Asphalt for the asphalt pavement overlay of Ironwood Drive from Lost Dutchman Boulevard to McKellup's Road in partial fulfillment of fiscal year 2018-2019 street maintenance plan through the Government Procurement Alliance Cooperative Contract Number 17-16P-05 in the amount of $280,354.21 plus a 10% contingency for unforeseen change orders in the amount of $28,035.42 for a total not to exceed $308,389.63.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
I have a proclamation designating August as Drowning Impact Awareness Month. Whereas Arizona's future prosperity depends upon the long-term health, safety, and well-being of the nearly 2 million children and teens in our state, and whereas drowning is a top cause of injury and death for children and teens in Arizona affecting not only the victims but also families, emergency personnel, and our society as a whole, and whereas child drownings are nearly 100% preventable, including drownings which are classified as maltreatment and make up an average of 1 in 4 cases in Arizona, and whereas research-proven strategies can save lives including constant and capable supervision, restricting access to water, use of life jackets, swimming lessons for adults and children at the appropriate age, rapid emergency response including CPR and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships and communities to break the cycle of maltreatment, and whereas awareness of the problem is just the first step, evidence-based programs to bring these strategies to families is the best way to save lives, and whereas during the month of August, Phoenix Children's Hospital in collaboration with state and local governments, community organizations, and private citizens will be engaging communities throughout Arizona in a coordinated and comprehensive response. Now therefore, I, Jeff Sertie, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 2018 as Drowning Impact Awareness Month and urge all communities and Arizona and citizens in Arizona to participate in efforts to reduce drowning risk, strengthen families, and protect children and teens. And I believe the fire department is here.
We can crawl right here.
The guy's so straight on, we can get out of your way.
It's okay to be in the picture.
Good evening. On behalf of Superior, Fire, and Medical Districts, I want to thank the mayor and council for your continued support proclaiming August as Drowning Impact Awareness Month. This proclamation will be included with others from all around our state and will be high in the walls of Phoenix Children's Hospital. As of this evening, there have been 76 total incidents resulting in 26 fatalities just in the Valley of the Sun. Nine of those deaths are children under the age of five. 26 families, 26 fire departments, and 26 communities have been burdened with this unimaginable tragedy that is so preventable, and we're only halfway through July. We can't stress enough the importance of vigilance in and around the water. It only takes two inches of water and two minutes of time. Through tireless efforts and constant water safety outreach, the City of Apache Junction and our entire fire district reports zero drownings. So we all need to do our part and keep it that way. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, team.
Announcements of current events. Start on the side.
So last meeting we had in June there, Logan Reichwald came in, and we were, oh, sorry. So Logan Reichwald came in and we gave him, honored him for winning the Arizona Junior High Bowl Riding Championship, and he went up to here in South Dakota and took fourth in the nation, so just want to give him some kudos for that. That's a great accomplishment. There was 108 contestants and he took fourth place, so that's a great deal. Just on a personal note, I'd like to, on July 1st, I took a little fall and sustained some injuries, but I would like to give some praise for our police officer that, I'm not sure who it was, but I'll find out, but he came there and he was, did some professional work and helped get some information from my neighbors and stuff, found out that I wasn't drunk, but that was a good thing, not that I ever am. But also to the fire department and the medical crew, they came in and treated me great and got me to the hospital, and so I got on a recovery trail real quick, so I just want to give our public safety, our people, the kudos for just being on the job and doing a great job for me. Thank you.
I am going to walk down onto the floor.
We are actually in the presence of royalty tonight, and we are privileged to have, living right here in Apache Junction, Mrs. Senior Arizona and Nancy Berhorst, and she has brought some esteemed friends with her, and if everyone can come up. First, I want to give you this certificate from the city, just honoring you for being the first that we know of, Mrs. Arizona from here, and who do you have with us and tell us some about the whole pageant?
With me I have Sharon Friendly, and she is, first of all, our Mrs. Senior Arizona, Mrs. Senior America, and then she was Mrs. Senior Arizona USA. Lynn Perry is Mrs. Senior Minnesota this year, Mrs. Senior Arizona USA 2018.
Wow.
In order to be in this pageant, you have to have been in another pageant somewhere and have qualified with your talent and your philosophy of life, and most of all, your ability to perform and meet people and be kind. And I think that what happened to me is that I started out in 2001 with the Mrs. Senior Arizona America Pageant, and I was in it for 21 years, and then I was invited to come and be in the Mrs. Senior USA Pageant, and I went, and my whole life changed. When I was seven years old, I dreamed of being a queen, and I became a queen when I was 77. It took me that long. I was always beautiful. I love being a queen. I love performing. I love meeting people. I love their kindness and their love for us. I love giving shows at the VA Hospital and the nursing home. I will go to any place that has veterans and perform without cost for them. I'll keep my clothes on. Even though they would like you to take them off, you know. Anyway, we have honors flights with the USO at the airport. For $500, for $900, a veteran from Korean or the Vietnam War or World War II can go to Washington DC with a partner that will take them, and it is completely paid for, and they'll be there for two whole days, and they'll sometimes meet the president, and when they come back, we were waiting for them, and that was...
They wanted to get out of their wheelchair and stop the car.
They loved us. And so, the veterans are our priority, although we do shows for Scottsdale and for Chandler, and we're just all over the place, and mostly nursing homes and assisted living places. And we became very popular since 2001 with a lot of these places, and so we just make an appointment and we can go in anytime. When you become, if you're interested in becoming Mrs. Senior USA, whatever state you would like to be, and you run, you get a crown, you get a banner, and your crown and your banner that you get that year, you can wear for the rest of your life. You can, if you're good at shows, you will go and perform anywhere you want. You can even be paid for your shows or donate to a charity, mostly. You get this bag that says Mrs. Senior USA. Your crown and your banner comes in this box, and it comes in the mail. It's beautiful. I have two more crowns in there. Okay, I would like you to take, really a big help, Joe. Okay. The pageant, look. The Miss Universe Pageant, I was Miss Senior France, we're in this magazine, the pageantry magazine, and it's just amazing when I, they gave us the magazine at the pageant this year in May, and I brought it home, and only three days ago did I look in there and find my picture and my name a few times and that I was Miss Senior France. The pageantry magazine also gives us this friendship plaque. My first plaque in my life. And I became the director for the North for Mrs. Senior USA, and I think that my job now is to seek out people and ladies that have a talent and would like to become a queen I don't think there's any under 50 in here.
Right.
Okay, I live here in Apache Junction. I'm looking forward to holding a pageant here. If you're willing to come to the pageant, you have to let me know. As far as I know, 2019 is already taken care of, so we're going to work on 2020 to hold our first pageant, and we will be looking for people, maybe your mother, if you're 50, would be like to run, and they have to have a talent of, we never get a comedian. We never get anyone that can tell 10 jokes consistently, and we really could use comedians. And sometimes we get people that do soliloquies and things like that, and usually they don't go too far, but I know a comedian would really win. We have a lot of singers, a lot of really good dancers, we have ballerinas, piano players. We have everything. This pageant is held in Las Vegas. We were at Planet Hollywood this year, and we had both, the Miss Universe Pageant was at Planet Hollywood, and the Mrs. Senior Universe was at Planet Hollywood. We were in the same week with the Miss Universe Pageant, so we had a personal invitation to come to watch that pageant, and we did. We learned our gowns didn't look good enough.
They wanted bathing suits.
Yes, they definitely had bathing suits, but, well, you know, we're not bathing suit material anymore.
I'd wear one of those.
Anyway, but we do have costumes for Universe. We have costumes for whatever country you are, and some of them really come all decked out with these great big feathers and big things on their heads, and it's just amazing what they can do. I think I could talk about this pageant all day, but I think you've had enough of me, and I really enjoyed being here. If you ever see me, I'm usually at Goodwill or Fry's, and I love the new Goodwill, and I'm looking forward to a Trader Joe's.
Well, thanks for coming out. I don't think we've seen the last of you ladies, and Arizona truly has the most beautiful women in the world, so.
Mayor, she's a queen. She outranks you.
Thank you.
Did you get one?
Thank you.
Okay, I actually have a couple more announcements. I forgot, since we've met, we had the fireworks in the Fourth of July, and they went off without a hitch. Lot of concern about the dryness, but we did get some moisture, which helps, and I don't know if Bryant's going to talk about this, but we really got slammed with some microbursts last week, and the power was out, and I want to commend the crews for the quick cleanup, and also Bryant and Matt Busby were both away, and Anna McCray stepped up and did an awesome job, and I called her about six or seven times, and she got it before the second ring every time, so she was really, the city was in great hands while Matt and Bryant were gone, so, city manager's report.
And besides you calling her, I called her too, so, yes, she did respond very well.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, city manager, and I would also like to add my thanks to Anna for holding the fort and doing it, never fails, you know, it always happens when the city manager leaves, we have a big storm, and that happened many years ago too, and Anna did a great job. We had 11,000 customers without power for a big chunk of time. We hadn't had that for a while, and we've lost some poles, we lost a lot of trees and landscape across the community. Want to send my huge thanks out to Public Works and PD and many others, and Parks and Rec and other staff who came and helped out to set up barricades and help our very best to keep our community safe. Thanks to the fire district as well, they're a big part of emergency process. Thank you for coming in, also Rick and Tina for their work and effort in helping us stay safe on drought, avoiding any drownings, and our goal is the highest. We expect and are working towards a zero. Yes, the Fourth of July, no major incidents there. We're super proud of our staff for the great work that is done. It takes a lot from our Parks and Rep, Public Works, Public Safety to help make that happen, and we're really thankful for Republic Waste Services. They have and continue to sponsor at $20,000 a year, which helps cover the cost of the fireworks as well as our staff overtime. Thank you for your support on GPEC. We look forward to the work that we're doing on the Greater Economic Council and Janine and her staff and all involved are moving all that we can as fast as possible to build our economy here. Thank you, Spencer, and your team for the master plan update as well. It's a great thing to have out there in the community. I'm also super pleased to pass along a very nice compliment that Denise received in the City Clerk Department about making it very easy to sign up for and to go through the process for food trucks. We are starting to see more demand and more interest in the food truck arena as we have established a downtown area or area for those. This vendor also said that she was going to be passing it on to other food truck businesses, so it's building upon itself, and it says here that, very thankful for the work that Denise has done and that she will, I told him that it made it, you all made it pretty easy to get it through the business license process, so very, very thankful for that. Our goal is to do that and to do our very best to help business thrive. Back on the 17th of June, our mayor, vice mayor, councilmember Barker, along with several staff members, Heather Patel and Larry, had participated in the MAG Desert Peak Awards, and I'm happy to show some hardware here in a minute. We've got a video that we're going to show, but before we jump into the highlight, I wanted to also highlight that we were nominated for another award in the public-private partnership of the Flatiron Community Park this year, and that was really neat to see as well. We did get awarded along with the Text to 911 Project. I would love any feedback that you're hearing from our residents and citizens about utilization of that, but we received one award for that, and I'll put this up by councilmember Barker in a minute, and then, Al, are you ready to hit the video for the other one?
The Apache Junction Chronic Homeless Committee was created in 2016 when the Apache Junction area saw the need to address its homeless and at-risk populations. Born out of and at the heart of this committee is the Community Resource Center, which is located at the Genesis Project Soup Kitchen. Here, visitors can receive a free lunch, they have access to a clothing bank, they can obtain benefit services or receive employment help and advice. They might visit with an onsite nurse or even receive legal and mentoring services. The committee also helps those who need transportation resources and provides donated bikes to those who qualify. Through public partnership with city and county partners, along with other public agencies, the Apache Junction Chronic Homeless Committee will continue to work at meeting the needs of its homeless and at-risk populations in the East Valley.
We have over 15 different agencies that are nonprofit that work together and doing our very best to help those who are at risk. The mayor was able to receive this award and talk and make some very nice comments and thanks to those who are involved. I express my thanks as well, as it is a community-wide effort to watch out for those who have needs and are looking for help, and we, as a basic service, are doing all we can to help create a culture in our community that allows for that to thrive, and so we are very proud of that, and we received high esteemed recognition throughout the Maricopa County and our region through the Maricopa Association of Governments, so wanted to make sure everyone in our community was aware of that, and, Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight.
Okay. Could we get a little more light?
Yeah.
Honor McCray, presentation and discussion on fiscal year 1718 council work plan, fourth quarter.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Anna McCray, Assistant to the City Manager, and as you heard, I'm here tonight to provide you with a fourth quarter update on fiscal year 2017-18 council work plan. The work plan contains 41 projects and initiatives which were identified by departments and approved by you just about a year ago. There were nine projects anticipated for council interaction in the fourth quarter. Many of those continue as ongoing projects and will likely be seen in this current fiscal year's council work plan as well. Before I provide an update on the fourth quarter projects, I will let you know that the five projects identified third quarter that were carried over to the fourth quarter have morphed into ongoing efforts. You just saw the video on the homeless, Chronic Homeless Committee's efforts and the award they received. Those will be ongoing efforts. Number 11, the Lost Dutchman Heights zoning bank will continue. Number 23, the energy conservation audit. Staff is now conducting that in-house and will look at continual improvements on cost savings. Number 29, the liquor license application process and fees. City Clerk will be making efforts on changes, if applicable, after state law is passed regarding that. Number 37, the solid waste and recycling ordinance. Development- Development Services staff expects that to be done early in 2019, if not just before. With regards to the nine projects identified for the fourth quarter, six have been completed and some of those again will be ongoing. Number six, the landfill closure deadlines and the operating agreement. The transition of senior services in-house. We've had a good year and operating smoothly thanks to Parks and Rec staff's efforts. And of course, they will continue to pursue addition, additional funding and resource alternatives as well. Number eight, the Strong Sustainable Communities Program. The Spring Neighborhood Cleanup was completed and other identified projects have been posted on the city website. Number 12, the Regional Economic Development Efforts with GPEC, with the reappointment of council member Struble on the board and approval of the contract. And then 13, Community Development Corporation is fully constituted and will be taking on a role of furthering the Strong Sustainable Community efforts. Lastly, number 41, the enhancement of the development review process. Council recently approved the IGA for the MyGovernment online software to streamline the code compliance, planning and permits and coordination among the agencies involved in those reviews. Forums have also been updated and revised by staff in those efforts. Fourth quarter projects that continue include the permanent base adjustment. The publicity pamphlets have been completed and will be mailed out in July 26. Prop 423, the proposition for the permanent base adjustment will be on the August 28 ballot. And early ballots will be mailed on August 1st. The financial management software, we are very close to a finalized agreement, so we expect to have that in this first quarter before you for consideration. And we're looking forward to that because we had yet another backup incident in which we had to order apart, which are getting harder and harder to find for the AS400 we are currently on. And then number 40, the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Board. Again, staff will proceed with any changes post a change in state law. So that concludes the fourth quarter work plan update for the fiscal year 2017-18 council work plan. Looking ahead, we are currently devising the fiscal year 2018-19 council work plan and have received input from departments. And we will be bringing that for your consideration as well as your input at a meeting in August. May I answer any questions?
Any questions or comments?
I'm delighted to see so many completed projects and those that are quote, "near completion." Some of them are within a month of completion.
Staff has done a great job, sir.
Wonderful, yeah.
Got a lot going on. Your Honor, I will make mention that I have asked staff when we do the presentation on the financial management software to literally bring in the 1980s era, the, we have to work on the paper we use, all of that. And it's, it is something that we're really looking forward to as a staff to move forward on. And some of the problems that come from it, it's becoming costly to maintain, bring someone in. There's not the expertise out there anymore with, with this legacy system. So want to thank staff working on that.
Does it have a crank on it? Almost, huh?
Almost, yeah.
Wire hangers are involved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Direction to Staff on Proposed Changes to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Six, Animals. Arnold Freeman.
Captain Arnold Freeman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff and Citizens. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, I gave you a presentation over some of the streamlining, if you will, of our animal ordinance, Chapter Six, to include elimination of the Class III kennel permit and also the fees associated with that. There are no fee increases with the remainder of the changes. So we'd ask that if you would consider the direction to staff, then we'll move forward with it.
So any questions or comments? That went way faster than I thought.
We talked about it extensively last time, though.
So this is the one that we, we talked about a couple of weeks ago. And we had had a situation involving a number of animals and the amount on a, on a lot that kind of drove some of this.
We learned our lesson.
Yes.
So we're ready to direct staff and then we can finish it up once and for all.
Correct. So this, tonight would just be the direction to staff, our step. And then we would come back with the changes. You would see the existing and then changes in the ordinance and then may, continue to discuss it.
Okay. If no more questions or comments, I'll call for a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the following direction be given to staff regarding revisions to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Six, Animals, that you proceed as presented with the changes.
We have a second.
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Council Direction to Staff on Proposed Amendments to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Three, Procurement Procedure. Joel Stern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council. This will be a little quicker than animals. Essentially, we, we provided to you back in June, a red line. Once again, it's just in general form, but tonight is just a, a direction to staff. I will come back with a work session and then also an ordinance. So that's what I'm asking.
We discussed this extensively also.
We have discussed this one as well extensively.
Extensively.
Want to thank a lot of members of staff, Heather Hodgman and Public Works for helping coordinate. There's a lot of moving parts here, but we have worked on this extensively and look forward to staff, Council Direction on this.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Then I'll call for a motion on this one as well.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the following direction be given to staff regarding proposed amendments to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Three, Administration Articles Three through Seven, Procure Procedure. That staff proceed with the changes as they recommended.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Do we have a motion on the next set of meetings?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Monday, August 6, 2018, in the City Council Chamber, City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively. And that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Tuesday, August 7, 2018, in the City Council Conference Room and City Council Chambers at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
And I don't see any call to the public.
None.
So I think we can adjourn the meeting.